Okay, I'm going to call the meeting of the Tribusburg Planning Board to order. A little bit after seven o'clock on the 20th of June. And we're going to start by having our normal roll call. So if you will just go around the table and say your name, then we will proceed.
Hannah Carver.
Hannah Carver.
Guy Carwin, not on the planning board.
Village attorney. Rick Geiger.
Jessica Daz.
Victoria Romano.
And Tammy Morse, our municipal village clerk.
Okay, are there any additions or deletions from the agenda for the season? We circulated it in advance. Okay, I don't see anybody ask me for any, so we won't do that. We have two sets of minutes in front of us. One from our last meeting on May 24th. Has everyone had a chance to look at that set of minutes?
Yeah. Yes, you have.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Okay, if they're moved and seconded, is there any further discussion of the minutes? Okay, all in favor of the minutes from the last meeting? Opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Now, we also have the minutes from the March 22nd, 2018 meeting, which are mostly complete. These are the minutes that because of the transition with Matt leaving the village staff, we didn't have them at the last meeting, which was our May meeting. But now we have these. There are some pieces of information that we weren't able to be absolutely sure of. And normally what we do in the minutes is we have, as you know, you know, the board members who are here, the village officials who are here, others who are in the room, and, you know, the names of the applicants and their representatives. So we didn't, we don't know for sure which of the applicants were here. Do, does anyone here from the applicants recall who was here at that March meeting? And then we can complete the minutes.
Yeah, we definitely have votes on that.
Okay.
So, Brendan, do my introductions, I write down everybody who's here. So I'll be able to follow up. I'll get those up and down.
Okay, great. Now, to Tammy, yeah, to Tammy. Now, how would you, how would you like to handle this? Do you want us to defer acting on these minutes? Or, I mean, we could act on, subject to, to the corrections?
Subject to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right. So is there a motion to approve these minutes, subject to just the addition of the names of the applicants who were in the room on the 22nd, March 22nd? Okay, so, yes, it was. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of those? Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous to both. All right, I'm going to, now, I normally have, you know, some comments to make. I'm actually going to really cut those short tonight because we have, as you see, a very long agenda. And I want to be, try to be extremely efficient tonight. So I'm going to just, you know, end by saying, let's try to be very efficient tonight. And every, I hope folks in the room will be understanding of that because if we're not efficient, it could be a very late night indeed. So that's the end of my comments. Now, our first order of business is to officially adjourn the public hearing that we opened at our last meeting in May. So is there a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, I don't see any discussion. All in favor of adjourning the, officially adjourning the public hearing? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. All right, the next item on the agenda. We're going to hear some presentations. And we'll have a chance for board and presenter back and forth about those presentations. We're going to start with representative from Camoin Associates, Michael Ngolo, who's here with us from the Alden area. His air conditioning went out in his car on the way here, so he warned me about that.
A little sweaty, a little worn or, or maybe.
Right, but he's going to take us through a summary of the extensive report that they provided, including, you know, the revised report, which I think both reports are now, have been available on the, in the publicly available, you know, Dropbox. So, Michael, no further ado. I think there's a microphone there.
Thank you. Do you have a clicker for the slides, please? All right, so. All right, is that good? All right, very good.
Just tap it, let me see.
Yeah, I'm on, all right. Technology? No? Uh-oh. How about the?
I chew. Of course, neither one of us works because everybody's scary.
You know what, I would be happy to.
All right, so thanks, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. I'm Michael Ngolo from Camoin Associates. We're an economic development consulting firm, obviously hired by the village to do this analysis. I've been involved in economic and fiscal impact analyses for about 14 years, 15 years. My firm's been in existence for about 20. We do this all over the country. We work in 31 states. We have five different offices. And each of these is definitely unique in the sense that we go in and we look at the very specific granular detail of how services are delivered, how taxes are raised and other fees. And we come in and we interview folks. And we'll, we'll talk about methodology in a minute here. So I would certainly invite, if there are questions in the board, will I go, feel free to interrupt me as we, as we present. All right, so the next slide is methodology. Just a couple of things on data sources. I'll mention MC. MC is an economic modeling system that we use. This is a way that we can take direct impacts, jobs, wages, and sales, and we can model the indirect impacts. Business analysts online, get some demographic data. And the American Community Survey is how we came about some population statistics and projections. Yeah, all right, good. We did look at the village budget, obviously. We looked at the school district budget. We got a number of documents from the developers, things that they have filed already with the village, with the planning board. And we got some cost sharing agreements that are in place with the fire department and the ambulance. We did a lot of interviewing. This is actually not a complete list. But I'll just mention the village planner, well, former village planner now, the chief of police, the fire chief, EMS, DPW. We had at least one interview by phone with each of them, and in some cases, two. I think we talked to the school district superintendent and the business administrator at least, I think, three times. And we had a bunch of email exchanges with them. And then, of course, we talked to neighborhood housing on a couple of occasions, I believe. This table is very small. The tables get bigger, and we'll look at them a little bit later on. I believe you all have copies of the PowerPoint, so you can see there. In the construction period, we understand from the developer that about 8% of the overall construction budget would be spent locally. In this particular case, on the economics, we're talking about the county when we say locally. What that means when we run the numbers is that's about 20 job years. That would be local job years. So folks from the county being employed over a period of time, about 20. The ongoing spending impacts, the way that we think about this is we have new residents of the village. They have new household income. Some of that household income is being spent locally. And again, the trade area in this particular case is the county. And we're saying, with those new households and that new spending, I'm not going to go through the math. We come to about 20 ongoing jobs. So we're saying, by virtue of this spending happening, you're going to have some additional jobs. Again, this is the county level, not the village level. All right, so I think probably something more interesting is the village impacts. This table I've actually broken into two because it's a little bit hard to read. So this is the left side of the table here. Fiscal impacts result from a number of different factors changing. One is the change in population. In other particular cases, it might be a change in tax revenue or fee revenue, that kind of thing. What we figured out is that based on the development, the population of the village is going to escalate about 7.7%. We looked at the village budget and we said, what line items on the village budget are likely to change as the village's population grows? Okay, so we looked at all the budget line items. You'll can see in our report, at the end of the report, there's an appendix that has the entire village budget, line by line. We selected which ones will change based on population. And we found that of the village budget, about $561,000 are line items that would change as the village population grows. The village population's growing 7.7%, and that corresponds to $47,000. So we're saying, you're going to get some variable revenue of about that much. These are things like court fees and parking fees and building fees and fees and fees and fees, right, okay? You have an increase in taxable assessed value. This is growing your property tax base. That's growing by 4.8%. I'm looking at that last line, 2023 year, when the project is fully built out. The rest of the years are the intervening years. You get about $47,000, $48,000 in tax revenue. On the EMS side, we predicted about 14 additional calls per year. That's based on the averages. We talked to the EMS district. They apply, and the village gets reimbursed for calls made that are responded to from within the village. So of those 14 calls, the village would get about $5,000 in healthcare reimbursement, Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurance. This is the right half of the table. The project will be purchasing water from the village's water and sewer. We predict a user-based increase of 4.3%. And that corresponds to $30,000 in water sales and about $20,000 in sewer sales. That's what the development would be paying, the individual properties. If you add all those things up, in that last year, you have about $150,000 of new revenue. That's what we're showing for the, for the village and its various funds. With respect to the expenditures, similar thing. I have a gigantic table, which I'll break into two. The left side of the table, oh, and by the way, we're inflating this every year at inflation at about, at about 2%. So that's what that inflation factor is right there. We're saying, your costs will grow, your revenues will grow. So just like the revenues, there are going to be some line items at the village that will change as the population grows. We identified all those line items and we said, these are the ones that are likely to change. And we multiplied that by the 7.7%. I believe, yeah, there was about $919,000 worth of line items that would change. So we're saying, what are the variable expenditures? About $78,000. You have your EMS costs. So those 14 EMS responses that they would have, 14 EMS calls, we're estimating a cost of about $16,000. And on the fire side, I think we estimated, I don't recall the estimate for fire right now. I'd have to go back and look. But the number of new fire calls, we estimated would cost about $14,000. There'd be a little bit of road lane miles added to the village. The village currently maintains 24. This would add about 3/4 of a mile of road lane. So that's a little bit more road to plow, install, and maintain. So that would be increasing road lane miles by 3.2%. That adds about $8,000. You have like some very small increases in the water costs and sewer costs. Again, 4.3% of the variable expenditures there. That adds about $4,500 and $3,000 in expenditures. You add those all up, you get $124,000, $125,000 in expenditures. So if you add all those together, and again, I'm looking just at that last line, 2023, when the project is fully built out and occupied at the village level, you have about $150,000 in new revenues, about $125 in costs. So your net is about $25,000. So what our analysis said is if you look at all the factors and we look at all the costs and all the revenues, the village would actually be receiving about $25,000 more in various revenue streams than it would have in new service delivery costs. So this is the net. It's positive by about $25,000. All right. So the second question was school district. Again, we met or talked to over the phone, I think a total of three times, with the various school district officials. We went through their budgets. We went through via email, showed them exactly what we looked at, asked for their input. One of the things that was critical to this particular case is that the student population in the school district has been declining for a number of years. And so there's quite a bit of capacity available at the village, sorry, at the school district right now to accommodate children. What we got from the superintendent and from the business administrator is that they could absorb quite a few additional children without having significant changes to their cost structure, which means to say they would just simply be backfilling the children that would used to be part of the school district. They didn't have, they wouldn't have to hire new teachers. They wouldn't have to hire a whole bunch of new staff to a large extent. The, based on the composition of the units that are being presented here, the estimate was 40 children associated with the development. The ones that are 0 to 4 years old don't go to public schools, so we take off about a quarter of that. We end up with 33 students that, that would be the increase in student population. 33 students equals about 3.1% increase in student population. We went through the variable revenues. There were a few variable revenues that would change with student population, some minor fees and some minor state aid elements, textbooks and that kind of thing. $56,000 was the number there. They would get about $56,000 for those 33 new students. They would get $125,000 in new tax revenue. And therefore, the total new tax revenue is $182,000. On the expenditures, and I'm sorry, this table is so small here. We did the same thing on the expenditures. There were, again, not very many variable expenditures because of the excess capacity at the school district, at the elementary, middle, and high school. So the school district was very clear. They felt they could absorb quite a few children before they'd have to do any new hiring. And most of their costs, of course, are personnel. So we showed that due to student population change, only about $43,000 in variable expenses. A big one was students with disabilities. And this is, this is all over the state. There's nothing unusual about this particular school district. But serving students with disabilities can come with a big price tag. They still have capacity within their special education program to absorb the roughly five students with disability. Right now, the ratio is 15% at the school district. About 15% of the children qualify for some level of public special education services. The school district felt that they could handle, for the most part, servicing those within their existing staffing pattern. However, there does come occasions where special education students have to be placed elsewhere in the special programs that the school district itself can't provide. So we have an allocation for that. That's about $40,000. And therefore, the total new expenditures is 84. You add, if you compare those two numbers, subtract the costs and the revenues, by 2023, when the schools, all the schoolchildren are present and the project is complete, we have a net positive of about $100,000 that the school district received above its new costs. So that's the summary right there, this last sheet. The village would have a very, very modest positive increase, $25,000. The school district, about $100,000. You get about 20 job years during construction. And this is, again, in the county, countywide. And then about 20 permanent jobs.
All right, thank you, Michael. Let me, let me start off with a question here. So obviously, like all good economists, you guys are dealing with a huge number of variables. And then you're kind of assigning assumptions to them in order to, for you to be able to project into the future because we don't really know what the future might hold. So what I'd like to know is which of these assumptions, if you're off in either direction, have the, have the most potential impact on your final forecast? And which of those assumptions are most likely to be off in terms of your analysis?
Well, our assumption is not going to be off. But let's just say, let's just say they were. Well, I'm going to answer a different question first. I'm going to say, which are the ones that are typically the most problematic? Numbered school age children. Numbered by far the most important factor in most of the analyses that we do. You have an unusual situation where you have such excess capacity in the school district, where that is not necessarily an issue. Even if we're off on that particular ratio, it's really not going to make much of a difference because you're getting, you know, a fair amount of variable revenue and variable expenses with each child. And you don't, you're not going to have to build a new school. So that's a big one. The other ones that can be problematic, but in this case, we didn't see any ones, which is if there's other capacity issues. For example, if you're near your maximum water capacity or sewer capacity. If you are right on the edge of having to move from, say, a volunteer fire department or a part-time police department, which is what you have, a police department sacked by part-time. And this project would click you over. That would be another one that we would be somewhat concerned about. We'd want to look at that a little further. It didn't appear to be the case. We interviewed, like I said, the police chief. We interviewed the fire chief. We interviewed the ambulance district. There didn't seem to be any equipment needs, you know, new facility needs. You know, no one was at capacity or, of course, everybody wants new, you know, but that's not, nothing to do with this particular project. So in terms of your question, which is what, what could be the issue would be if there's a capacity issue that we did not identify, that would be the one that would most likely change the analysis. I would say the other assumptions, again, the school age children is not a big issue here. I would say the other assumptions are fairly standard. And, you know, population change, pretty standard. We're not going to be off by much there. We said 7.7%, maybe it's 8%, maybe it's 7%. But it's not going to be 20%. So I would say I feel pretty comfortable about the rest of the analysis, unless there's a capacity issue we didn't identify.
Yeah. So on the, on the, the village revenue side, let's say that the build-out of this development, especially the market rate for sale elements of it, doesn't happen as fast as expected or as completely as expected. Is that the kind of thing that, that could affect your results dramatically?
Okay. There is a possibility that that could happen. So one of the things I didn't explain, because everyone in this room knows it, that there's an affordable component to the development and there's a market rate component to the development. The market rate component is relatively small. I believe it's 17 units of the 73, I believe. Sorry, thank you. So how those price out, and it depends on the, on how the assessor approaches it. The assessments can, it's funny, I, I deal with assessors all over the state. Everyone insists when I talk to them that the way that they assess is the only legal way that can be assessed. And everyone I talk to assesses a little bit differently. Sometimes very differently. So depending on assessment practices locally, how, if it's, if it's purely market-based, when it hits the market at that price, as opposed to something based on square footage or comparable sales or whatever it is, that, that can be an issue. But I think to your, to your point is that there is, per unit, there's a lot more property tax coming off the market rate units than there is off the affordable units. I would say roughly on a per-unit basis, it's hard, I'd have to go back and look exactly, but I believe it was about three times as much on a per-unit basis. And so those units were coming on a little bit later anyhow. So we show them in our analysis coming on later. But if they weren't going to happen until much later, well, you wouldn't get the property tax until that point, which is they come on the market. So, so yes, the timing of how those come on and the sale price would affect the property tax revenue. But again, there's going to be an offsetting change, the expenditure lines as well. So it's, you know, I don't see it necessarily reversing the conclusion. And by the way, I will say, because of the planning board and the publics, you know, everything that we do is an estimate, it's projection. It's, we're trying to make the best estimates that we can. And we've been peer reviewed plenty of times. We've never had a problem with that. And we've actually done some post-mortem analysis and they, and they come pretty close. But there's, you know, it's a range. It's a, it's a range around it. But I think the conclusion that we're coming to is that it's going to be a mild positive fiscally. We could be off, and it could be a zero-sum game or it could be more positive than we're saying. But I think that's, if I was the planning board in all of your contemplations about all of the other factors, including the economics and finance, I would say, I, I feel pretty safe to say, this is not going to be a significant negative for the village. I feel safe saying, this is not a negative for the village fiscally.
Other questions?
Thank you, Tori. This is just not my strong suit, but for my own clarification. I've got a version on this report. I've got a version two and then a horizontal one, a relaxed one. But I am a little bit lost why there is such dramatic changes from version one to version two, where the net under new fiscal impact village due to development are in the first one, all minuses, and become all pluses in the second one.
Sure.
It's a little fuzzy.
Yep. So we have some various readers of the draft, thankfully. The issue at hand is that, so bear with me because this is going to be a little wonkish. But somebody noticed that when we escalated the costs to the ambulance district and we escalated the costs to the fire district, we escalated them based on the current number of calls in the village. But the fire district and the ambulance serve a much greater area than the village. And, and therefore, the escalation factor, instead of being, I, I don't remember what it was originally. Instead of being 10%, it's only 3% because you're serving, you know, instead of there being 90 fire calls, there's 400 fire calls. So the actual increase is, is much smaller than what we were originally anticipating. We actually went back, and if you'll see in the second report, we went back and actually got the contracts. And we actually got the actual figures of three-year call volume for the village and all the towns that are part of the agreement. And we spreadsheeted it out and said, this is with the, this is without the development, this is with the development. We did all the calculations and we did the difference between the two to come to our conclusion. So it was an oversight on our part, overestimating the impacts on those two departments.
I'm sent to quantifying questions. One is, can you speak to the tremendous capacity of the school district? If we're talking about 33 students, doesn't seem like I've mentioned this number there. Do you have a value of how many more did filter come?
Just a second here. I can't remember, I can't remember if I put it in the report or not.
It might be in that.
I, no, I, I don't recall, I don't think I put it in the report. So we, you know, we, whenever we interview somebody, we push them hard either way. We say, okay, well, tell me why this is, or tell me why that is. And we, you know, we say, and the indication we have from both the superintendent and the business administrator is that they were, I mean, I want to say it was down a couple hundred from their peak. So we're not talking about.
And that speaks to this notion of if that's one of the variables, how many babies will come? And we know that there is quite a bit of, that's significant.
Yeah, that was definitely my impression from those discussions is that it was, it was like a no-brainer to them. They just said we could easily. In fact, I recall she said, if all 33 children. In fact, I recall she said, if all 33 children appeared in the first grade, we'd have a problem.
Yeah, yeah, right.
But as long as they're over more than one grade, we could handle them.
Okay. And then speaking then in terms of population growth and noting that the market value, homes bring more properties and if those are developed for later stage and they don't happen, I'm sort of focusing on 2022.
Yep.
Which seems like that's solidly in, leaving some variable with the market value maybe not being sold yet, but we're still at a gain.
That's correct. Yep.
Right, okay.
A small question. Are the, the net increase-decrease numbers in $2,023?
Yes, they have been inflated at 2% from today's budget. Yep.
Does the number of children projected, taking into account that a lot of the parental units are going to be for older folks? I mean, they're not specifically for old folks, but they're like that.
Oh, that they're, that they're likely to be occupied by folks that are past the child rearing ages?
Yeah.
We just simply use averages in this case. So, you know, if you think about it in this point of view, you know, it's 73 units, there's 33 school-aged kids, well, there's 40 total children. So you're talking about a little bit more than one for every two units. So, you know, it could be slightly less. Again, I think, I feel like we're within the ballpark. If anything, I believe it would be a little bit less. When we, when we do these kinds of analysis, you really see the children come in on the three and four-bedroom units more so than one and two-bedroom units for that exact reason. The one and two-bedroom units tend to be couples without children.
And then is there an assumption that that whole 7.7% increase is coming from outside of the village?
Yes, that's correct. We're saying that those are all new units to the village, that without this project, you wouldn't have those 73. So you have your baseline growth, right? Whatever, or decline, I don't recall with the village. And this would be sort of the bump above that amount.
So to that end, it could be children coming into adult age, now looking to live outside of their, you know, domicile and want to seek housing in the village.
Well, I mean, yeah, the thought has been, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but that a lot of people will be trying to kind of downsize into some of these programs and that, right? You know?
But if there's some, some people who replace.
Yeah.
I move, and some of you comes in and is my house.
Yeah, yeah.
As I recall, if I had my numbers right, the INHS projection was about 17 new children, school-aged children.
I don't.
It was, it was 138 new.
Right, yeah. Which I recall 40, and we used that and backed out the non-school-aged children.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Oh, you're welcome. And, and, you know, thank you for the opportunity to go through the, go through the report and make the revisions. Obviously, if there's anything else of a concern or any of the revisions that need to be made, we're happy to do that. Hopefully, there won't be, but if there is, we'd be more than happy to do so.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, now we are going to hear from the applicant. And I'm going to turn it over to Adam, who's promised me he's going to be efficient.
I wrote that right.
Okay, good, thank you. And no further introduction is necessary for members.
Thank you. Adam Walters, Phillip Sidel, representing the applicant. Okay, so we had a public hearing last month. We got a lot of comments. And remember, previously, MRB had given us their second round of comments, asking for various, what I'll call, pretty minor changes, various things. So coming out of the meeting, we thought it would be best, as the board starts to focus on SECRE, we should respond to the environmental comments that were received, at least the major themes emerged from the public hearing. We also wanted to respond specifically to TBNA's legal counsel letter. We felt there were some arguments made there that were, legally needed to be responded to on the record. And then, of course, the team has worked to respond to all the MRB comments. So we have filed with the town three submittals, three supplements to the application.
Could I just interrupt for one second, just to tell the board? We also have, we have representatives here from MRB. And so if there are things that need to happen between the applicant and our experts on technical side of things, they're prepared to do that this evening.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we did three submittals. We're not expecting you to do anything with those submittals tonight. We just want to highlight them for you so that when you start to go through them, you'll at least have some flavor as to what we were thinking, what we were saying, what we were doing. The, I guess I'll start with the legal response on the Von Shenning King letter, which, Von Shenning King represents TBNA. We did a couple of things there. So we looked at the legal arguments they made. They made a couple. First and foremost, they argued that the SECRE process you had initiated was, and the exact quote, was critically flawed, and that you had to start over. And their basic objection, they argued that you had not copied the village Board of Trustees and the zoning Board of Appeals as involved agencies. So of course, we saw that and thought, right, then you're right. And we reached out to Lance, who provided us the lead agency packages. And of course, those entities were the first to unveil it. So just completely, factually wrong. Not a lot of effort would have been necessary to figure that one out. But their lead argument, critically flawed, completely, factually wrong. And for us, that's the flavor of a lot of what they said. So I'll move on. They spent a lot of time arguing that you must classify the project as a type-one action. You did that back in January. We all know it's a type-one action. They then went on to argue that because it's a type-one action, you must, must require the preparation of an environmental impact statement. That's not how the law works. We provided our response to that, we provided you a bunch of case law. But, you know, I do a lot of this work. And I happen to know that Von Shenning represented the Town of Tire in the Delago Casino Resort litigation. So that was a type-one project, the casino, acres and acres of parking, parking structure, hotel in a farm building, roughly 20 times the size of our project. Town of Tire neg decked that project. Von Shenning King defended that neg deck in court. I attached their brief because every time I was starting to make a legal argument, I looked at their brief and they made the same argument.
If it's surrounded by. Part at home, Delago?
I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, continue your argument. By all means, that's a big debate for.
It's kind of a fundamental rule that you do not take a position different than you would argue in court. And they, in fact, cited the same cases I cited. That's what was surprising. So we put in their brief and we put insights to their brief to show you that every one of their arguments, they argued the exact opposite in defending the Delago Resort. And we thought that was important to get on the record. We thought that was important for you to know. I'm not going to go into a lot of the details. Interestingly, they threw out a bunch of arguments, traffic, there's going to be a new road, that requires an EIS. There's going to be a change in drainage, that requires an EIS. Various other things, they just argued simply trigger an EIS. They had to respond to those exact arguments in that, in that, in that litigation. And they put in a great quote about, it's not about the trigger, it's about the analysis, it's about the issue, it's about whether there's substantial adverse environmental impacts. I gave you that information, I thought you'd find it useful. It's not to tell you what you need to do, it's simply to rebut the argument that you must do something. In this case, they've argued you must require an environmental impact statement. We would say it is soundly within your discretion. This record demonstrates a hard look of the environmental issues. You have questions, we want to talk those through. MRB has a team, we're happy to work with you on those issues. But I just want to be clear, there's no legal obligation to do anything specific relative to SECRE, it's in your sound discretion. And I am sure the village attorney will agree with me when you ask him later. We had previously, had previously written a letter to the board a couple of months ago. I had responded to that, I had a lot of legal arguments in as well. I had responded to that directly to the village attorney because I thought those were legal arguments. We should respond on the record, but it doesn't need to be something that you spent a lot of time on. Since many of those were repeated in this latest submittal, we've also attached our prior response. And of course, as I agreed with Kathleen when she was here last month, I have provided her the copies of all of our submittals. So we don't have to do a FOIL request and things like that. So she's got everything that you have. That's the bond letter. We move on to kind of what I'll call the environmental issues, the comments that were concerns, comments, concerns expressed at the public hearing about environmental. And the, yeah, skip the whole. We just kind of captured those, no particular order. But number one was a number of people expressed that we had not responded to MRB comments from the first round, and that somehow impacted your ability to address SECRE. What I remind you and what I said in the letter is that, remember Lance came in and said, we've done comprehensive comments that cover preliminary and they cover final. There were a bunch of issues that we thought were appropriate to address at final. We didn't just put those in the letter and say, well, deal with that later. I sent that list to Lance and he came back and said, no, yes, no, yes, no, yes. So everything that we said in our last response to MRB comments, everything that we said we would respond to later, Lance agreed was appropriate. And I just thought that's important to understand. We're not trying to hide the ball. We're not trying to not provide you information that's relevant. But his comments were designed to take you all the way through final plan approval. And he had a lot of detailed issues that we typically deal with at final. And we did consult with him before and said, this is for final. So again, I just think that's important for everybody to understand. The, I would like to ask Andy to very efficiently cover major comments and concerns we heard about drainage, pollution in stormwater, and the US Army Corps preliminary jurisdictional determination, no weapons mitigation plan.
Battalion, sorry, probably this week loud enough without the mic, so I'm not going to stand over there, but if you can't hear, let me know. Drainage, as you all know, is obviously a big issue. People are very concerned about it. We also understand New York State is a very heavily regulated, you know, practice. We, you can't just go out and build. We are under the regulations of the New York City C subdivision of this nature, once you disturb one of the five acres, we have to prepare a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we're in the process of doing. That gets submitted to the appropriate agency. Their experts, which in this case is MRB, will review that in extensive detail, which they have started to do and continue to do. And once they're satisfied that our plan beats all of the state requirements to protect the, you know, the neighbors from any issues of flooding or from pollutants that might migrate off-site, then we would actually submit that to the state for a permit. So this SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, deals with temporary pollution erosion control during construction to make sure we don't have sediment migrating off-site while we're building, you know, the private capital. Large areas of new constructed wetlands and practices that we're putting in have to filter the water, they have to temporarily hold the water so it's released at a rate so that we don't have flooding issues. So all of that is for all of the capitalizations that we need to provide, they get reviewed. So there's multiple levels of protections in making sure that what gets designed, what gets filmed, is not going to impact off-site neighbors.
Yeah, Andy, so a lot of the discussion has to do with, you know, and your analysis has to do with the stormwater and dealing with, you know, these events that cause potential flooding conditions and the consequences of that. Where does the issue of, which also has been raised, what is the issue of the effect on existing groundwater conditions? You know, sort of the hydrogeology that's under the ground. Where does that all get accounted for and understood? And so that we can anticipate what the consequences of, you know, this kind of major construction would be for a situation where I think there is fairly significant groundwater underground flow going on?
There is high groundwater, we definitely have high groundwater, which the warnings did indicate. None of the practices that we are proposing are infiltration practices. We actually can't, you know, provide infiltration because you do have high groundwater. So all the practices that we are proposing are dealing with surface water, okay? So we'll take that, like a tree at home. We're not doing injection wells, we're not doing large practices that is going to add volumes of water to the current groundwater levels. It's, is temporary, it rains, fills up the practices and then it goes away. So we're not holding large volumes of water or injecting or impacting the groundwater source as part of the project.
Yeah, no, I'm interested more in the impact of the construction itself. And, you know, you, you build a building somewhere and, you know, you have to sink it into the ground to some extent. And so it potentially can divert the groundwater, it can, you know, I mean, there are things that can happen, so I understand it.
Yeah, most of our site, obviously, written is going to be at raise. I mean, that's a balance on the construction cost, there's not a lot of fill. Because you have high groundwater, conditions are not ideal, say, compared to moist site. In our instance, we're not doing a lot of cutting and raising the site. Majority of the site is kind of more of a fill condition. So building pads will be up, there's no foundations, our basics, you can see in any of the buildings, facilities would actually possibly be deeper excavations and that's more of a trench condition. We're not building large volumes that are going to stop groundwater movement.
So the idea is to, so having walked the building, which many of us in this room have done in the past couple of days, lots of really wet grass, a couple deer. It's relatively benefited to be a field, so it's already got whatever they did to it to be able to grow grass there and so the whole middle is not wet. So the idea is that maintain that and just deal with the runoff as it comes so that it doesn't go into the groundwater, which then could have an adverse reaction. But that's a pretty big, that's the big project. Because of all the.
It's, it's a.
And then the pervious surfaces that would be added.
Yeah, that's exactly what all of these practices are designed to be. That's why I see this one being so large, is that, yes, as soon as you start paving, as soon as you start putting even lawn versus meadow, you increase runoff. And that's what the regulations were there, technically saying, okay, well, build this so that we can treat it, we can hold it, we can let it seep off at a rate that's no fashion that's going to be that in the surface. But we're not sending ground, this isn't here to take all the water, open a valve and then it goes into the ground. It's a surface condition that will allow continuing to seep.
I guess I would, I think a theme that's kind of emerged from our perspective as we kind of looked at these issues and responded to the concerns, and I think it came out of a Moi presentation too, is while this seems like a really big project in the village in terms of the village and where it is and the size of the overall, it's, on the projects we work on and all of us work on, this is a really relatively small, simple project. And I don't want to diminish the importance of the comments and the concerns we've heard and the need to go through this process and really look at things carefully. But, you know, one of the things we did in that biogenic response is we gave you a list of all the, in, just in the last year, the residential projects that have been negged out. And they go, they generally start at a couple of hundred units. And there's, yes, this seems like a really big, complex project, but compared to a lot of stuff we do, this is really a very small, simple project. But the other thing to remember with stormwater is the requirements have changed dramatically. Certainly in the time I've been practicing where, you know, I know the Tamarack subdivision was putting in leagues, the stormwater requirements there were virtually nothing. So you put in a lot of a pervious surface and no drainage, no controls. And so a lot of the requirements of today are designed to not just control what happens here, but to kind of help correct for mistakes of the past. And we see that in subdivision development related across the state. It was built in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, it was not designed properly to handle stormwater. And so there's always a higher level of concern because stormwater is a problem now. It's a problem now because things weren't constructed properly based on current standards. The approach was just dramatically different. The idea was, let it go, it's going to go downhill. It's going to go downhill. It's fine. Doesn't work that way. Somebody's always out there.
One good thing we have close to us at Cornell University, Cornell has the Northeast Regional Climate Center, has been tracking the storms, and we all know that we're having more high-intensity, short-duration storms. So over the years, it used to be the old information we needed to use to size these practices. Now we utilize the Cornell data, which basically is taking into those higher kind of events. You know, so we have better data to rely on to size these. Andy, again, as engineers, we tend to be a bit conservative anyway, you know, so we kind of oversize them a little bit.
I could ask a question? Well, no, it's more a statement. I think a lot of people view in TruMansburg this as a rather huge project, the biggest one ever. But back to water for a minute, there's some very... Especially with the strange weather that we're going to endure in the future. Are there any provisions of taking some of this water that's being runoff here and there in store and this and that to go back into the landscape or the trees that are there or the new ones that are being proposed to be there? And if so, I really haven't seen anything too specific of what is being saved for the property itself. I've heard a lot about where it's going to go, you know, drained, but what portions of it will remain to be utilized at the site itself?
Yeah, we're not proposing any rain harvesting at this point for that. A lot of projects that we do, commercial, residential, we have a lot of rain in this area, so you don't need to irrigate a lot of trees and plants.
That's unpredictable in the future. You know, we're getting intense heat and very dry, hot days. We don't know what's in the future. And I think the whole idea of saving some water in areas this dense with as many trees proposed to be there would show a bit of...
You do have to counterbalance that with the concept that if you do keep a lot of water on site, groundwater, eventually it starts to seep back into the ground, and we don't want that with a high groundwater level.
But it can be collected in such a way that it does not...
At this point, we...
Be in a collecting tank of some sort.
At this point, we have not proposed anything. Can I just draw on our experts here for a second? Because now we're in the realm of water and hydrogeology. One of you is a water expert.
Yes, that would be you. Review the drainage.
Right, right. So is my concern over potential effects on the groundwater that are not part of the stormwater control practices, that are separate from that, that this project could potentially have an impact that, you know, an unintended consequence...
During the construction?
During the construction, as a result of the construction, of the roads, of the utilities, of the buildings, are... Am I, you know, sort of finding something where there's nothing to be found, or is that, you know, something that needs a harder look?
In my experience, I have long across and create impacts to groundwater from a project like this. Some of the points you brought up are very good, like the... There's no basements, obviously, which is a real benefit to the... It's not going to interfere with groundwater, and also groundwater is not going to be an issue with homeowners. So that's important. Raising the site also makes a huge difference. Since this is mostly filled, even your utility depth is not going to be significant. I'm not a geologist, and I don't have the report in front of me as far as groundwater depths that we're encountering.
That was going to be my question. So that means we don't have an answer to the average groundwater depth below surface. I'm sure it's in a report somewhere.
Maybe.
That provides...
Yeah.
And really... It varies quite a bit. And you get groundwater depths, but you're also... It may not be consistent depending on the season, you know, when the tests are done. It may have some variation also with that. But I think, as I said, the... I think the treatment methods are appropriate for the project. I know there was mention about holding some of the water back, but the problem with that can be not only adding to the groundwater, but also you lose your storage capacity. If you hold water back, you have a big storm, then you expose and cause a lot of damage to retention area and that. These are the practices I've used in the past, where I've been on their side, I would do more design, I would do review, but it was helping Lance with this. And I don't really see issues with groundwater on this project. Could not use infiltration, we're using a fire retention practice for mitigating water quality, which essentially is a filter with an outlet at the bottom of it. So you have a sandy soil mix, and a lot of percolates through that, gets collected and discharged into a retention pond to hold it back and then allow for a controlled discharge off the site.
Thanks. All right. Any interest in efficiency? Will you address the wetlands issues in the written submittal? I won't make Andy stand up here and do any more of your questions.
One other question. I can see a lot of thought and care has gone into this design. What assurance is there that in the end it'll work?
During construction, a professional engineer, our firm will be there, make sure that it's filmed in accordance with the plan. So before you can close out the permit with the DEC, we have to inspect everything, make sure that it's built according to the plan. All of the openings and the structures that control everything, all the little pockets that we designed get built. The filter is draining. We have a drain test to make sure the filter is drained. So wait to sign off on the notice of termination that says, "This now is functioning per the plan, per the approved planning." And then all of these permanent practices, I think just on an annual basis, we need to hire an engineer every year to come out and do inspections. It's actually true of any practices. At Minnieville, where the small stormwater ponds are, we have to go out every year and say, "Okay, are the pipes flogged? Is the pond filling in? Are there too many cattails? Is the trash rack choked up?" So there are inspections on an annual basis that are required to make sure that these things work in perpetuity. So that's what allows these to continue to function as of time.
Great. Thank you, Andy. If drainage is the number one issue, traffic is the number two. Traffic concerns. We had a submittal from Bonshennick from Gordon, GTS, a consulting guy who does some traffic work. Amy Deick is here from SRF, our traffic consultant, and has written a letter in response. It's included in the materials, and I'll just ask Amy to hit the highlights and then see if we have questions. And I know we've got... You've got representation on traffic here tonight as well.
Good evening, Amy.
I don't think you have to mind.
I'm loud.
Okay.
Amy Deick with SRF and Associates. I'm just going to go through the highlights. So the first point that GTS made was that there were some issues that they saw with compliance with the local zoning requirements and the New York State highway requirements. Our response is that we do comply with the local zoning, and all of the roadways in the site are designed to accommodate the project specifically and to fit with the character of the village. So that's why everything is designed that way. Ultimately, the design of the roadways will be subject to review and approval by both the village engineer and the highway superintendent. After that, GTS got into an analysis of the traffic and parking for the site, and they noted that there would be a significant traffic increase on South Street, which we actually noted the exact same increase in our traffic study, 40% increase on South Street. However, we maintain that these volumes are consistent with the classification of South Street and the intended use of South Street as a village street with larger connection, and that South Street can actually accommodate much greater volumes than this project will GTS noted that there is difficulty turning at Main Street. However, they were very vague with their comment and didn't actually identify which turns had difficulty. We went out and did observations and intersections that we studied. Of course, we did our traffic counts, and we don't see any significant concerns in the peak times. Our analysis indicated moderate delays, which is pretty typical of, you know, a state highway going through a village, such as 1996. They noted some issues with the proximity to Schoolhouse Lane. The intersection is relatively close to the Schoolhouse Lane. However, the volumes that this project will generate are very low, and so we don't expect any adverse impacts on traffic at Schoolhouse Lane. Same holds true for the private driveways that are in proximity to the intersections. They made some notes on insufficient parking and configuration at the nursery school. Everywhere that they analyzed issues with a nursery school, they keep comparing it to a daycare center. It is absolutely not a daycare center. There is a very large difference between a daycare center and a nursery school. A daycare center can range anywhere from babies through typically 12 years old. This is specifically a nursery school that will provide schooling for students that are three and four years old. And there's a certain set number of classrooms, set number of teachers. That being said, there is sufficient parking on the site, and shared parking would be areas surrounding the nursery school. And that's typical for developments such as this, where you share parking because the residential parking is typically filled up overnight, whereas the nursery school parking would be needed during the daytime. GTS then goes into an analysis of our actual traffic study. They noted that our traffic counts were done in June when colleges were not in session. We've been working in the Ithaca area for well over 20 years, and we've analyzed traffic lines at all different times of the year and compared them to New York State traffic lines, and we found that traffic volumes in this area because of the lake and the seasonality are actually higher during the summertime. So our traffic volumes from June are very valid.
And just an important point. A lot of commenters from TBNA said, "We didn't do traffic when kids... The school was in session." That's not correct. It was when Ithaca and Cornell were not in session. And as Andy says, summer traffic, boardens, all is up for that.
That's right. They then wanted to note issues with the growth rate that we used, and that ties into a later comment that they made regarding the construction time period. So our traffic impact study was based on a 10-year construction time period where we used a 0.25% growth rate per year for that 10 years. Subsequently, we understand that the construction time period will actually be much shorter, actually four years. So we went back and we looked at what would happen if we used a half a percent growth per year for four years, as suggested by GTS. And oddly enough, the numbers actually come out identical in the background.
And that information is under care, ready.
GTS then suggested that we provide gap data at Main Street. So what that actually means is that we would go out and measure the gaps in the traffic on Main Street and determine if there are sufficient duration gaps for someone to turn left or right out of one of the siding streets, such as South Street. Typically, we don't do a gap analysis at an intersection unless we are seeing failing levels of service and do high delays on the order of 50 seconds. And based on our observations and our analysis software, we're seeing delays on the order of 14 to 20 seconds between existing and full development conditions. And this project is projected to add one additional vehicle every three minutes at an intersection. So we don't see the need to provide gap data. They questioned our trip generation estimates, and again, this went back to the daycare versus the nursery school, and as I mentioned, there's a huge difference. And yes, a daycare of this size would generate a significantly volume of traffic as compared to a nursery school. The nursery school will have staggered arrivals. They won't coincide with peak commuter times because, you know, it's school times. They questioned our distribution. Based on our analysis, we expect that 30% of the traffic will use Rabbit Run to go to the south and east. And they questioned that and argued that more traffic would actually go north to Main Street than would go south and east. If you look at Google Maps and actually, you know, do the directions, it's almost identical distance and identical time period to do both of those travels. So why would you want to go out on the Main Street where you have more traffic sooner? It just makes more sense to use Rabbit Run. Even if we did send more traffic to Main Street, there would largely be almost entirely right turns on the Main Street. The difficulty is with left turns, so it wouldn't add significantly. And then they questioned our site distance analysis and speeds. So we made an assumption on the site distance analysis. We took the speed limit and added 5 miles per hour to it, which is the standard industry analysis when you don't have actual speed data. And they suggested that we go get actual speed data. Fortunately for us, Chelmsford Park and actually did go get speed data. And their speed data results indicate that 91% of the motorists reported were traveling at and below the posted speed limit of 30 miles per hour, which supports power use of 35 miles per hour in the site distance analysis. So our site distance analysis is valid.
And that was pointed out at me, and you still...
There any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for you. So one of the things that came up about traffic at the new development that happened is that it won't just be residents. It'll be guests and delivery vehicles and moving vehicles and, you know, all of that kind of sort of subsidiary or, you know, indirect traffic, you know, thinking of that way. So how is that kind of, you know, disruption or change accounted for?
So that's true of any residential development or any development to that matter.
Right.
And in this case, we use national data for apartments and single-family residences as proposed, which is an industry standard. And all of that takes into account every trip that goes into the driveway during the peak hours, whether it's a resident, a visitor, or a delivery.
So it's visits, it's not residents for a...
Yeah, yes.
And those are... Can you just spend two minutes talking about peak and how that is evaluated versus kind of overall traffic?
Sure. So what we do is we try to look at the most intense time period of traffic, both on the adjacent roadways and what the development will generate. And that almost most often coincides with the commuter peak times. So in the morning, that's between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and in the evening, it's between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. So we go out, we count that two-hour period, and then within that two-hour period, we identified one hour that has the highest traffic volumes on the roadway. And then we go back to our national data for our land use, and we generate traffic for that time period and add it to the roadways, and that's how we do our analysis. And I would also point out that, you know, I heard someone mentioning the potential for seniors living in this development. We didn't consider that at all. They typically don't drive during the peak hours. They avoid the peak hours at all costs. We also didn't account for residents that either wouldn't have cars or would choose to use public transportation. So we're erring on a conservative side, and our traffic volume projections are higher than what old people would use actually do less.
Which is inappropriate.
Did you do an analysis of the availability of public transportation through TruMansburg to other locations?
We didn't actually...
In that works, how often, how long do you have to wait, because of cost, etc.?
We did not because we wanted to be conservative with this, and we look at what if everyone used their own platform.
So there is an ability, if you want to kind of be less conservative in your traffic analysis, to assume that a certain amount of population is going to bike, is going to take public transportation and eliminate those vehicle trips. We did not do that. So the assumption is everybody...
The 40% increase is based on vehicle driving.
On everybody.
Including seniors.
Including seniors during peak hours.
Right, okay.
It's, again, like the Moi said, it's designed to be very conservative.
And I would note that in our experience in the Greater Ithaca area, TruMansburg, Lansing, all of this area, your public transportation use and bicycle use is much higher than other areas in the state.
Except for a certain type of gear.
I remember you talked about a guy...
Any other questions for Andy? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're from York Traffic Person? Yeah.
Sure. So Irving Anthony reviewed the SRF report that was done in December, I believe. I've reviewed... I've reviewed it for completeness and accuracy. Everything seemed to be, it took a very conservative approach. Just to speak to the nursery school, peak hours and stuff like that. They did take all of their land uses for the single-family homes, the nursery school. Even though those peak hours for those development trips don't align with the peak hour, you know, maybe not. Most of the time, sometimes that wouldn't line up with the peak hour traffic, of the background traffic. So I would just add that, that was a conservative approach, to add the development trips of the peak hour to the background peak hour, which is a conservative approach and basically what is a standard practice. But if there's any other questions?
Well, so let me ask you the same question, because, you know, all these things are, I mean, some of it's based on actual collected data, but a lot of this is projections, right? It's based on some assumptions about what will happen in the future.
Correct.
So what's your assessment of where are, where are the places where, if they're wrong, that it's most likely to manifest itself?
I mean, typically, these are so conservative that typically when you go back, and sometimes in my experience, we've gone back and done a follow-up analysis. And a lot of the times, they're right on the numbers. So these, the ITE manual, which was used in the development of the development trips, is fairly accurate and proven to be accurate throughout my experience.
Can you just talk a little bit about the ITE?
The ITE manual was like an international accepted manual for development trips for retail, single, I mean, any sort of development you possibly think of, municipal, residential, and commercial. And it has a coded land use for each type of, you know, any sort of development project.
I've only had one instance in my career where we didn't have an ITE number. Scrapyards, scrapyards don't have an ITE.
Sometimes you find some.
The traffic engineers have to make it up on that. Adam, do you have, do you have more?
We're just about there.
Okay.
Actually, kind of, since this is a little bit of a working meeting, right? I just wanted to point out one thing, which has been bothering some to me, is that the current Truansburg Community Nursery School is located on 96. So the parking for that nursery school that's been there since the 80s, I believe, has been on 96. Just to put that in perspective, nor do, and I'm not saying this is just a small point, being a mother of school-aged children. When we go to events at our current school, there is definitely not a parking place for everybody that wants to visit every event, nor is there ever in the school unless Walmart are in charge of it, maybe. They're not. So I just wanted to put that in your brain since it's been there. So say you completely disagreed, and you said, you know, this traffic study is totally wrong. We think the numbers like warrant, what? Like what would the remediation be? What would you do? What would the developer need to change in order to make the traffic flow better? Or could the traffic flow be improved? Could the developer improve the traffic flow in any way?
As far as, you know, at the entrances or anywhere? Are we talking about the surrounding transportation network? I just...
I mean, it's a big question.
Like if the numbers were completely wrong, you're asking?
Yeah, like what?
Well, what would the village do?
What could we do?
Let's say a big traffic problem happens, you know? And so what would be the kind of mitigation that would be possible to deal with that, given the current, you know, layout, you know, traffic?
The mitigation, I guess, if you were, if you want to go back and check, I mean, I guess you would follow, you would follow the study.
Or say, you know, not even that it's, that the numbers are wrong, but say that you still have concerns at the end of the day. What are the available options to the village?
You can, you can look at similar instances and similar studies that have been done.
Do you mean like what if everybody moves in, or actually millennials, and they all have plates and everyone has a car? No, no, I'm not packing.
Everybody goes south to make...
And we're totally wrong, it's totally wrong, and there's suddenly...
But they have to come on the road next to Kathy's house if you don't have a car.
What would the remediation be? Traffic lights? It would be...
I guess you incrementally...
We have to wipe roads, give us lanes, this is terrible, we can't...
Yeah, you'd have to look at what the problem is, where it is, and then address it, you know, incrementally. I mean, it's all stop sign.
So I think one of the big concerns is on South Street, that it's a really quiet residential street, that cars go fairly slow. If you increase the number of cars on that street, like people in the middle will walk their dog out there, like, you know, take their kid out on their bike. So what kind of, in that particular case, what sort of thing is available?
So, to address your question, sorry.
No, just to address your, to address your concern with the South Street, we've been looking at options with the entrance in between the two residential properties. And this type of development actually doesn't really necessarily warrant the need for two access drives. So we're exploring alternatives. What if we were now to actually have an access drive between those two properties due to the closeness? Would we get away with moving it up towards a wetland area and putting a, 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 a emergency access drive with like a crash gate or some sort of bollard? So it wouldn't be an impact to South Street. And I don't think by having, now an access drive onto South Street would necessarily increase the, the adverse impact onto Pennsylvania Avenue. So we would have an emergency access from South Street for emergency services. I mean, that's an option.
You're saying just the one entrance line?
I mean, that could be a design, designing option, if, you know...
What if we wanted to, I don't know. I guess this question is a lot bigger than I thought.
I guess we're concerned about speed too. I mean, speed bumps could be under the street, I mean, it...
It just seems to be like 40%, a 40% increase in traffic on that road is maybe not nationally a lot, but like, it's a lot for around here. Is there anything that we can, like, to fix that? I don't know how to deal with it.
I guess as far as the traffic increase, like, that was noted in the report. I mean, that's, I guess, that's, it is what it is. I mean, it, but as far as from, from my experience in this small road, it's, it's a very small impact. I mean, we're talking seconds of the way, for five to 10 seconds at max from full buildout, from existing full buildout. And I just, it's not a...
And I know it's in the report, could you just, could you just restate? So 40% means a lot. If you have 10 cars and you increase it by 40%, that's a big number. Could you just, can me, I'm sure I can find it, but I can't. Do you have it?
I think it was the existing was, was a problem.
I have it. Thank you, just to put it into the, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so we're talking about adding on South Street in the morning peak, 24 northbound cars.
Okay.
And the evening peak, 22.
Okay.
So that's, that's less than, you know, that's one car in three minutes.
Thank you.
So, and, you know, like you said, 40% increase. You have 10 and you add four, that's a 40% increase. But those numbers, the scale of numbers are small.
And it's 40% during peak?
During peak, yes.
That's something to keep in mind as well. That is why, you can look at it a lot of different ways, but at the end of the day, the reason the traffic engineers look at it for level of service is because that's the impact either from there. That's where you're waiting longer or you're stuck. And so that tends to be the focus of those, of those types of analyses. But maybe we can also think about it relative to the schoolchildren. I mean, it sounds like a huge increase of 33 children. And the number from the morning, percentage-wise, just looks like a big number, but you have a school district that have hundreds more. You have a roadway that can handle hundreds more. That's, you know. Okay, okay. We're going to move quickly through the last set, density. There's been a lot of concern about density. I just want to make two really important points, because I think there remain tremendous misperceptions about the density of this project as proposed relative to your zoning code. If we did this subdivision, per your code, right now, those 15 lots, we could build with no affordable housing bonus. No affordable housing bonus, we could build 108 units. 108 units is as of right on that site. That number, we presented you a chart. 108 units as of right for this subdivision as proposed. We're proposing 73. There's been a lot of talk about the density bonus, and does it apply to the whole thing, or is it just the affordable housing? We're not using the density bonus except for one lot. Lot number four, where you were proposing four units instead of three. That's, and it's all affordable on lot number four. So we're using the density bonus only for affordable housing, only on one lot for one extra unit across the entire project. I just want to clear that up, because I think there just remains tremendous misconceptions about how the density bonus works and what we're actually proposing. The, I'm going to ask Ryan to quickly cover the light pollution issue. He's done a lighting diagram, as well as the emergency vehicle access fire trucks. He's got a diagram for that, but he's going to move through those, I am confident, very efficiently.
Well, you know, so is this in response to some, you know...
Specific comments?
Very specific thing?
Yeah, if, if you want to just absorb it, we've addressed every major issue we are. It's all in there. It's all in there, certainly. I think, yeah. Ryan and Amy will not take it personally.
Right. How about if we do this? Does anybody on the board have lighting-specific questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. So let's, let's...
Okay. We've got it.
We've got it in your submission.
You do. And why don't we just say, we've covered a lot of ground. We've written everything else out. We'll come back and answer questions for your next time.
Appreciate that.
Amy?
Okay, I've also given us a little bit of time. If there are specific technical issues that board members would like to raise while we have the resource of our experts, MRB, here, that's part of the reason they're here is for your particular questions, if you have any, and it's perfectly fine if you don't, so.
I asked mine.
There's quite a few points. It'd be a little hard to...
Well, you don't have to raise them tonight, but if you, if they're on your minds, we've got the resource here, so.
Right, I mean, there's quite a few, so, so, I don't want to pull one out of context.
Right, and I just wanted to add to our April 18 wire, which consisted of 96 comments.
Yes.
We did give a recent memo of revised plans to address those comments this evening. So we will be going through those very carefully to make sure that they're all addressed. While we, we can meet at the next board meeting, we can go through each, each question one by one, so.
Okay.
We have, we're getting copies of the...
We have every one.
They're in my box.
Or in that box or something.
Oh, and that box, we have a lot of stuff, so if everybody can stack it in the next week or so, like tons of changes.
Okay. And now we're going to have a little educational component to our meeting. And I'm going to ask Guy Crowe, Village Attorney, to take us through a quick summary of what's going to be coming, and I think we'll get started next month. The environmental assessment form process. We don't usually go through a type one situation. And so anything that's sort of specific to that would be helpful, but I'm going to turn it over to Guy.
Okay. Well, the one advantage of Seeker is that there's a lot of resources. I mean, DTC has staff counsel, a lot of stuff is online. Unfortunately, like a lot of other things, regardless of whether you're an electrician, an attorney, an engineer, Seeker has its own language. And it's very easy to confuse the terminology, because if you're reading a report case from 1980 and you don't understand that the meeting with the term changed in 2014, you're not applying it correctly. So there's a bit of an arc to it, but that doesn't mean you can't understand it. It's not a scary thing. So rather than give like a whole technical overview of some of the nuances of Seeker that might come into play, I thought, based on my discussion with Rick, that what I focus on is what are your next steps and what should you be doing between now and the next meeting to get yourself in line and up to speed as to what the first steps down that path would be for a type one, what's called a FE, for an FBA, a full environmental assessment form review. Full environmental assessment form, in terms of its procedural steps, is not really any different than a short program. You still do it all, but the number of points of data and the type of analysis is different, deeper, stronger. So the first thing that you should be doing is really getting familiar with what is the data that's in part one. Take a, take a good, hard look at it, make sure that you agree that it's accurate. There are some pieces of data that are in part...
So part one is the part that's filled already by the...
Part one is already filled out, and that's the one that carries a lot of statistical data regarding zoning, where permits and approvals come from, depth to bedrock, depth to groundwater, known significant natural, like, critical environmental areas, water bodies, wetlands. There's, there's batteries of information in there, and there's at least four different mapping systems at DTC to analyze that stuff. There's the EAF mapper, there's the ERM, which is the Environmental Resource Management Mapper. There's the CRIS database, which is more oriented towards state and historic preservation or geological dig sites. And there's also sort of a nature explorer mapper. And you can superimpose over all of that fish and wildlife mapping for federal wetlands. And you can get through New York State and look at where they have located endangered and special species, you know, whether they're threatened, whether they're endangered. And I've had literally positive triggers before on even small projects because of a particular type of wildflower that's, that's known to be prevalent in that area. Turned out in that particular case, it only grows in woodlands, and this was a field, so we didn't find any. But all that data's out there, and, and a lot of it is summarized in a nutshell in part one. So part one is, is your, is your springboard, and you use part one as a source for data. So I think you want to get familiar with what's in there. Look it over, see if you agree with it, and be creative with your thinking. If you think that something in there needs to be updated or corrected, bring it up. There's nothing wrong with finding out, whoops, nope, that the bedrock really is approximately three feet, because the only question that turns out to be wrong is the one you never asked. Okay, so it's pretty, it helps you get familiar with what is going to be the next step. Between now and next week, I would also encourage you to get familiar with something that's called the Seeker Cookbook. It's got a little bit of cartooning in it, but it's a very light, very easy-to-read thumbnail of the basic rules of Seeker and how all the timelines work together. To be fair, it's not entirely accurate, and they're about to change all of the regulations, so... But in, in terms of a shorthand, it's pretty accurate. There are, there are, and I don't think you have, if you need a Fonzie, which is what they call a negative or a positive, finding of no significant impact, which is what happens over the DPA. Seeker's really a miniature EPA. So, you know, state stormwater or local stormwater really comes from an EPA mandate. Almost all of this stuff is really originates at the federal level, and then it filters out. And New York State, as compared with almost all other states, is far stricter on environmental and far stricter on stormwater. Under the federal environmental standard, you, all they have to do is show that there's no significant impact arising from the project. Under the Seeker standard, you're looking at whether or not there are moderate or significant impacts arising from the project that are probable or possible. So you can also look at future, future potential impacts, which generally you do not do under EPA. So you're dealing with a pretty robust system. But being familiar with the, with the Seeker Handbook is going to get you familiar with terminology and timelines, because I think the next steps are to make sure you're comfortable with the data that's in part one of the long-form environmental, and then to start getting your teeth into part two, which is where you do the impact analysis. And if you have a working knowledge of the, of the terminology in the Seeker Cookbook, that's going to help you understand how to use the Seeker Handbook.
The cookbook is in your planning boardroom box, by the way.
Okay, good. The Seeker Handbook is a very long document. It's illustrative. It is a guideline. It is not an affirmative regulation. And I've seen a lot of things said and written that's... not an affirmative regulation, and I've seen a lot of things said and written that say that it has mandates in it, it does not. It gives you examples and it helps you perform weighted analysis and differential analysis, so you can determine the size and significance of the impact, its probability of occurring, whether it is permanent or only temporary, and whether or not any project or other mitigating circumstances might cause that impact to be weighted as to low, moderate, or significant. And there are broken categories within part two that you're going to look at, and you're not going to get through all of them in one note. Once you get really familiar with it, you will, because you'll know which ones apply and which ones don't. But you ask, you answer one question on the top, is there going to be a negative impact, and it doesn't say it quite like this, is there going to be a negative impact on, on significant, you know, flora or fauna? Is there a significant natural community there, is there an endangered species, is it a substantial wildlife corridor, is there something there that's unique? Is it a, you know, is it a U N A, is it a C E A? What isn't? If the answer's no, then pretty much the rest of the questions, you're done, you're done with that section. When you say yes, then you have to go through each sub-question. So, I, I think for next time, really get familiar with the data that's in part one and understand the SEACR cookbook, because it will give you an understanding of some of the terminology you're going to be tackling. And then going through and starting a couple of the, the part two analyses, at least dipping your toe in the water next month, and maybe getting through one section or two section. Once you see the process, I think it'll start to accelerate as you become familiar with how to use the cookbook, the part one, and the application to evaluate the impact through a pair of SEACR lenses. And at the end of it, you, technically the term finding statement applies to an E I S, but what you're looking to do is demonstrate two things, regardless of the outcome of your determination under SEACR. One, that you took a requisite hard, fair look at the data and the environmental impacts. And two, that whatever conclusion you made is supported by the record and is a reasoned elaboration is set forth, so that if and when challenged, the court has the opportunity to determine whether or not it did take a hard look. SEACR is discretionary. If it were, if, if this action were ministerial, you would not be doing a SEACR review, with very rare exceptions. So, there is going to be debate about how do you measure a particular impact? Is it moderate? Is it significant? Is it, is it not that significant? Has it been mitigated? There's not a correct answer. SEACR's loaded with gray. Some things will be pretty obvious, and there'll be consensus, and other ones you'll have to debate, but at the end of the day, you're either going to make a determination that there is a positive impact or that there is not a positive impact. And, and you'll go from there, but you're not going to be making that determination next month, like you want to get familiar with the terminology, so like you're comfortable in making an informed decision when you do decide. So, SEACR cookbook, part one, and then, you know, we can start working through the, the very beginning of the part two process and get that evaluation underway. One option that you do have is some communities like to do their own part two. I even have a community where the town board wants a pro forma part two done by planners and attorneys, so they can see a preliminary evaluation, and either agree, disagree, augment, or say, jeez, what are you thinking there, guy? You're crazy. And their own planning board doesn't want anyone to touch part two but themselves. So, at some point or another, you want to decide whether or not you want, you know, MRB and I, and anyone else you want to have input to coordinate, trying to put together a pro forma impact analysis under part two, so that you can evaluate it, see if it's right, if it's wrong, if it's, if it's light, if it's strong, whatever. You decide. You're the, you're the body that's been delegated that legislative authority to make the decision. So, no one opinion should weigh more than the others. All opinions should be weighed, and the ones you find persuasive and supported by the record and the ones that...
Thank you, Guy. Victoria, question, yes. We have the SEACR, and then we have the WEACR of the SEACR, which is our own Tormansburg analysis of the environment, and, which has some rather poetic 1950s comments in it. How do we weave these two together? Because just to give you, for instance, I didn't mean to say the WEACR, but I won't say it anyway, but the local one, the Tormansburg one. It says in the second section here, and it's moving, as such, they have an obligation, that's all of us, to protect the environment for the use and enjoyment of this and all future generations. And I add it here, with the global population doubling in the next 20 years, good luck. But my question is this, what strength does this carry? Do we work with this document in addition to the SEACR, or is it a complement piece to it, our local one?
Your, your local WEACR, as some people call it.
WEACR of the SEACR, yes.
Well, it's not necessarily, there are some things...
It's stronger in some ways.
Well, it's stronger because it, it expands the type one list, which you're going to be shortly looking at, because all those lists are ginger. The vast majority, in fact, the first like four or five pages of your WEACR...
Yes.
Is almost verbatim a restatement of exactly what is already in SEACR. There's nothing new in there. Those standards of what you're supposed to review and what you're supposed to take into account are already part of the state process. So, I haven't seen anything until I get to eight, a little bit of 805, if that's where the, where the...
That passage is, that's viable.
Well, that's 806, yeah, there's, there's a little bit of something that, that varies a bit from SEACR in the previous section, not much, but then there's some different type one impacts, some of which are, are useful and insightful, particularly, a lot of communities have enhanced analysis for, because of the lake and the steep slopes and the gorges. That makes sense, obviously, at least in my opinion. There's some in there that I think you would have trouble with, because you are not permitted when you do a mini-SEACR, as they're, they're called more in the SEACR vernacular. You are not permitted, permitted to override the state classification and call a type two action the type one action, or a type one action a type two action. You have a provision in there that says transfer a governmental property of 2.5 acres or more triggers type one. I think you'd have real trouble enforcing that. If the state park wanted to transfer 2.5 acres to, to, to the state D E C to manage his environmental forest, what's the impact from that? So, I, I think there are some in there that are questionable, but it really doesn't matter because this is already a type one action, so to the extent it may have triggered anything that was done back in January. And to the extent that, that it's, we get familiar with WEACR because some are saying it's going to be as early as September, because they finished up the public hearings. I, I don't buy it. And I've talked to the, the guy, the lead attorney for D E C right now, actually came out of the Syracuse area. He was a region seven guy. And I've talked to him about several glitches. SEACR has a lot of lawful purposes, but it's also got a lot of holes in it. It's got stuff that's contradictory and doesn't work, and how they administer it isn't always consistent with the regulations. It's, it can be a real pain from my perspective, not necessarily yours.
Just a job security guy. Just don't think that you're working.
You know, this, it drives me nuts that we have elections every two years in New York, but it means they don't get anything else done except fundraising, so I guess that is a good thing. But the, the problem is, is that, that what's really going to change is the type one and type two actions. A lot of smaller site plans and subdivisions are just going to be type two, because what the D E C has learned from massive amounts of required filings for the environmental notice limits, and is that the type of impact mitigation municipalities do for site planning is the exact same impact mitigation that's being done under SEACR. And SEACR is supposed to be a fast review process. You're supposed to take a quick review and get through it. It's not supposed to delay projects for years. Like California, I think they have a, a rare earth mine that's been delayed for 12 years under N E P O, and N E P O was never supposed to last more than six months. So, D E C's trying to streamline the process for almost all E A F reviews. I assume E I F, E A F, the harder looks, where you have to be scoping, those are going to get eaten up a bit. At least some of the regulations aren't being left, except for nothing. So, again, I don't want to get too far into it, but WEACR will be a good source of information for the types of infrastructure and environmental conditions that are in your town that may be deserving of a closer look. But in terms of the nuts and bolts and what it values, that's already in environment, or later, M Con law and SEACR regulations.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Guy.
Sorry I wasn't efficient.
I had, I had you finishing at 8:45, so.
Thanks, Guy. No, you don't.
All right. So, now we're on to old business. Circulated to the board earlier this month, the, I hope, final draft cost reimbursement agreement with the applicant. This is something that Matt has initiated, and Guy has followed through on, and it's now in a form that we can recommend to the village board that they approve. And so, that's what, that's what I've got before you, Seacr. Does anyone want to make a motion that we approve the agreement that was circulated, or not approve it, but recommend to the board, to the board of trustees that they approve it? And move from there.
Yeah, I'd motion to recommend this, Dr. Zinofford.
Say it. Any discussion? I thought you looked like you might...
Clarification in the second paragraph, it says, where seniors can age in place. How, actually, how large a part of that is allocated thus far?
Second... Oh, so in the second whereas clause, who are referring to? Says, develop your desires to construct a project will create an intergenerational, mixed-income community where seniors can age in place and young families can purchase homes in a very competitive... I think that's just a general statement I intend to...
Yeah, but that's, the idea behind it is...
Because I was looking over a place where you...
Yeah. Oh, really?
You can make that happen.
Me too. Yeah. Okay, anyway, going on.
I could eat myself worse than that, so.
All right. So, any further discussion? All right. So, all in favor of recommending to the board trustees that they approve this, developed a agreement, because the South Street subdivision is a planned application? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So, hopefully we get this in front of the board. All right. Let's see. New business. I thought I would give you an update on the status of research for zoning officer slash planner. I can't give you a lot of information, unfortunately, because things are still in the works. The mayor told me that he believes that the board of trustees might be able to take some action at their next meeting, or follow in their next meeting, but he can't say that for sure. He's hopeful that at least the zoning officer aspect will be handled by, before our next meeting. That, as you know, unfortunately, still leaves the planning piece of this, where, you know, Matt sort of ran point for us on a number of things, so it needs to leave that a bit up in the air. But I know that, that this replacement process is a high priority for the board of trustees, and I think they're moving, you know, much quicker than they think, because that's in addition to the excellent support we've already got. Okay? I put, we, we've been trying to schedule a generalized, not application-specific, training session for village boards on SEACR in general, and Guy has kindly agreed to spend a couple of hours with us some evening. So, he has had his schedule very, very tight, and this requires not just showing up, giving a presentation, but also carefully preparing it and being involved in a sort of training kind of situation with, you know, multiple board, local board people. So, the, the date that he wanted to do this was on July 17, in that, that evening. That would be the week before, the Thursday before our next regular planning board meeting. It wouldn't, you know, of course, it's not tied to any particular application, it's a general one of those meetings, but I, I think that we have, we're gonna, we're gonna have a choice here because we've got one board member who can't make that meeting, and one, one of the planning board members, and since I've been sort of trying to make this happen, I feel like we're sort of the ones that count. So, what I'd like to know is if, if we should go ahead, we can, we can do this meeting, and, you know, have, have one of our members absent.
Me too.
Maybe July 19 was... Oh, was it? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, you scared me.
Just maybe one night.
Hey, you scared me, please.
You will be. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. 19, but I have a couple of people's... So, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, you know, that there's a piece of me that just wants to get this done, but there's also a piece of me that wants everyone to be able to attend, and so, we could, I'm just, I just want to hear from people. You know, we could ask Guy to give us some more dates, and we can go through this and find out that somebody is not going to be able to...
Well, some are sick, right?
Especially in the summer. Or we could, we could also try maybe, I don't know if we need to do a video of it, or, you know, somehow make it possible, or like that.
I bet we have a trustee with a video camera, but a lot of...
It does seem like it's easier for me to just see, you've got a couple more days. Yeah.
I think the video would be better.
I think they were talking about recording it, so you could...
Oh, not, it is, no, I'm talking about recording it so that it would then be available to, you know, other, other board members.
Yeah, sure, you go. Who's out days waiting on that?
Yeah, you can. I was thinking you could also have, like, identified what days of the week are generally best, and then do your last hope better, or, or these, I don't know, like, whole, like, whole type of thing.
Yeah, we could do that.
And everybody could, once, once one column lines up, we could, I just wouldn't want to push it out past...
Well, is the 12th way too early, or you're not available? If Thursday is the... You can't, okay.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm actually going to be in Syracuse the entire day.
Okay. Well, yeah, doable.
All right, so send in a...
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that.
Guy?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can, yeah, I can fire out like five or six dates in the next, like, three weeks or four weeks, or something like that, just random evenings, so.
And it does sound like not the week of the 16th, possibly, that would be, right?
Yeah, I just warn you, you're not likely to see them under a wine station, because, especially early in the month, because for some reason, I usually tell people, you know what's genius? Every meeting's on Thursdays or at the end of the month.
We generally have great success having meetings on Thursdays. But this time, just...
Yeah, Mondays, Saturdays, there's four different municipalities that represent that have meetings, those things, they're on this off course, but there might be one that have a lot of...
Okay, so you and Tabby will communicate on that.
We'll do.
Okay. All right. Good. All right. So, now, is there any other new business?
There's, there's a tiny little bit of new business, but it's not really going anywhere. It's just this thought, which is that currently, existing traffic patterns for left-hand turns from South Street onto 96 and Elm Street onto 96, uber scary, super scary, because where, how close cars park, you sort of like shoot the gap, right, in, in your brain and go, I think that there's no one coming. And so, I've been thinking... And so, I've been thinking about what, and it's a state highway, so I don't know how making parking happen, just so you have a little bit more visual, and I guess that means talking to the state, because it's a, right, a highway, but that might be something that, it's just sort of in my mind to think of anyway, in terms of...
Yeah, I know the state gets very touchy when you put signs on there.
Well, or those white hash on the side, it's like, park here, just personal, but okay, will still be my own personal challenge.
But, no, I think that's the kind of thing that the planning board could take a look at. We've looked at parking in the village before, we did have parking...
Also, coming out of Good To Go, like, I don't know, I mean, I don't want to get, I don't want to block. It's hard, right? And I don't want to block, obviously representing the business sector largely most of my life, right? I don't want to block legal use or take up parking spaces, but I'm already picking out where I'm not driving, where you're setting.
Well, yeah, I mean, one of the thoughts on the parking project, you know, was just a simple lining of the main street parking areas on both sides would actually increase the number of parking spots by some amazing amount, like 25 percent.
Right, because you can actually serve space.
Right, and so, you know, and that is in conjunction with perhaps some buffers around those turn, so...
So, it's obviously not like super pressing.
But that's the kind of thing, you know, we can put on our agenda.
I know they made some adjustments at the exit to the library.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you're right.
Right, right. And they made concessions. Yeah, okay. They're willing to work with villagers. Okay, great, good, great, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, in terms of following through on that...
Sounds like maybe I can get some information on resources from...
Okay.
And...
You want to report that?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks.
I'll send you that address. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business? All right, so we have scheduled now a closed session of village council, and we have a statement that is allowed, and we're going to open the meeting. And so, what we're going to do, apparently there's a conference room, right? So, we're going to adjourn to that conference room. We're not planning to do any further business after that closed meeting. We're simply going to come back in, if there's a core of members still available, we're going to adjourn our planning board meeting, and that'll be the only thing we do after that closed session. So, all the experts, the applicants, the council of the public, you're welcome to stay. I have no idea how long we're going to be in the closed session. It could be short, by that I mean maybe a couple minutes, it could be long, and whether it could be an hour and a half. So, it's up to you.
Okay.
So, it is entirely up to you, what you decide to do, the, you know, the difference. All we're going to do, I promise, all we're going to do for the video, all we're going to do is come back and adjourn the meeting.
Absolutely, like, I promise, it's all I'm allowed.
Okay, great. All right, so let's go to the board. You have a good one.